Yeah, I've got the agenda from last meeting. I'll just go down through and hit the ones that need a vote, okay?
Okay.
We don't have a quorum yet, do we?
No, we don't have a quorum. Here's Martha, we have a quorum.
Okay.
Martha, are you there?
Oh, yes, I am. No tuning in.
Okay.
In time for.
All right, we have a quorum, it's four oh two.
Yeah, you all settled, Martha?
I, yeah, just pulling off my coat, but we can start. That's fine.
All right, I'm just gonna start the recording then.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, this is, I'm Art Whitman. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at four oh three P M. First order of business, does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Martha's muted.
Martha, you muted yourself.
I'm good. No conflict.
No conflict, thank you. I just want to point out that the meeting that we had two days ago was not posted on the website, as is required by law. It was posted every other place, so we are redoing everything that needed a vote from the last meeting, which was two days ago. So, one of the things that was voted on was warrants. So Dave, would you please read the warrants again and well, I don't think it's necessary to do over a thousand dollars because we've already done that, but we need to get a vote on it, okay?
Okay, check warrant number twenty-seven for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved. Oh, second then.
Moved by Mike, second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, three zero zero.
Check warrant number twenty-eight for four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Need a motion?
I move.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, three zero zero.
Beamer's warrant number three A, fifteen thousand, eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, three zero zero.
Payroll warrant number fourteen for twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and nine cents.
I moved.
Moved by Mike? That was a motion by Mike.
Martha, you're muted again.
Oh, second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, three zero zero. Is that it, Dave?
One, one second, I'm letting some people.
Okay.
Okay, we have payroll warrant thirteen for twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. So moved.
Moved by Mike?
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, five zero, or three zero zero?
That's it for the warrants, Art.
Okay. Uh, next would be public comments. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment?
No, we have one gentleman here, no comments here.
I see. Hi, it's Mike Algas. Are we gonna make comments after you present the agreement?
It, it, uh, the agreement is on the table, we'll remove it from the table and then there will be, there will be discussion. Because it'll be a motion, the motion that can, that can be discussed, yes.
Okay, so I'll wait then.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that, uh, that brings, does bring up, that does bring up the host town agreement. So, uh, to, uh, not this last meeting, the meeting before, it was tabled, so the, I need a motion that says that, uh, that, to, that, to be taken from the table, the motion that was made concerning, uh, Shasbury Solar's petition and with the, and it's the host town agreement with town of Shasbury. I don't know if that's the right wording, Dave, but.
Yeah, if I can, uh, just, just clean up from the previous meeting, that the motion is to move to take from the table the motion relating to approval of Shasbury Host Town Agreement with Vermont Real Estate Holdings One LLC.
Right, I can make a motion to take from the table, uh, the host town agreement with, uh, solar company.
And I second that motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Martha. All those in favors, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is on the table, open for discussion. Mike, go ahead if you'd like.
Sure, um, could someone summarize the, the changes between the previous and the current agreement?
Yes, uh, the, there were two things that we asked to be changed at that meeting. One of them was that the, no vehicles would be allowed, commercial vehicles would be allowed on East Road, north of the intersection with Holy Smoke Road. Their comment was, why don't we just make it that the, all commercial vehicles are restricted to the East Road south of the intersection with Holy Smoke Road. So that, that is in there at that. And the, uh, six B, which was the biggest contention, was that we, all we are saying that disagrees with the town plan and it leaves it, and in speaking with our, uh, attorney, this leaves it wide open for anybody else to, uh, comment to the P U C.
I, I'm not sure what you mean by wide open.
I'm sorry. If, if we say that the town agrees with the, everything that, with these, uh, what's the word I want to use? The screening and all that sort of stuff that was in there. Our comment was, all we want to say is that we agree that agrees with the, that it's, uh, complies with the Shasbury's town plan. We are not agreeing that it covers everything as far as screening. That leaves it wide open for you to, uh, say something to the P U C if you'd like to.
Okay. So, and then there's, uh, this conversation about leaving, um, leading, leaving things for the neighbors to object to.
Exactly.
All right, so, then, then let me ask a cou- a couple of questions. So the, the planning commission already, I believe, sent the select board a letter about the areas of the plan that they don't, that they shouldn't, they think should be eliminated. So that was sent to the select board. Uh, there was two areas. And was that sent to the state already, or the P U C already? Martha, you might know that.
So that, that was the recommendation from the planning commission's thoughts from kind of all of the information that we had got. And then we presented it to the select board who then had a discussion about, um, it and whether or not they would make that statement because the select board is making the statement to the P U C. So that, that's where that ended.
So the, the letter was not sent to the P U C from the planning board?
No, because, because the, the statement from the town is coming from the select board as, as far as I, and Art, please correct me if I'm incorrect or David, but that is, that is the correct statement, right? The statement is coming from the select board, not the planning commission.
Yes, the town's only allowed one intervenor, the intervenor is, is the select board. The recommendations from the planning commission were communicated, which is one reason why the field was drawn back from the pool residents and the field was drawn back on the southern part of Holy Smoke. And I know that doesn't, uh, doesn't match everybody's desire for that, but no one's precluded from, and I know there's filings in the P U C, no one's precluded from giving further testimony to the P U C that they think it should go back further. What was eliminated was, if you remember in the first document, it was very specific about, we agree that it complies with this, with aesthetics and all that, and we had that taken out. Because we don't want to say we agree with every single thing in their proposal from eleven seventeen, that new site plan. It leaves, it opens still for any of the intervenors to continue the objections at the P U C, and we still have standing at the P U C to, uh, make statements.
Okay. Um, so is the select board planning on saying anything about, it's really just one other area that the plan, planning commission said uh, should be eliminated? The, the one across from Kit's house.
Is that, is that, is that, is that document going along with this? Uh, is the planning commission's document going along with the agreement? Because that was what was indicated, it was indicated that that was an appendix.
The, the host town agreement is as it stands and as it's on the webpage. And as it was presented last week with these changes, the town still has the ability to address all these when the hearings start. Uh, it isn't, this host town agreement doesn't preclude either any of the other intervenors or the town from having an opinion later on as the process develops.
Yeah, I understand that, but, um, uh, the indication was that that document, at least the, the previous discussion I participated in, that that document was going along with this agreement. But it, are you telling me it isn't?
Uh, the agreement is as it's, as it's published on the webpage, I'm not aware of that, uh, if there was some indication, I'm not aware of it. The, the note or the letter from the P C to the select board is a, a different matter that was looked at and obviously by the retraction of some of these fields, uh, acted on.
So what, was that discussion among the select board specifically not to go along with the planning commission's recommendation?
Like, I mean, the advice of our town council, you know, we developed this, our half of the, the host town agreement, you know, our, our input was developed with town council and our town council, you know, advised against uh, drawing a hard line on that at this time.
And why is that?
Uh, because the, uh, solar company has no reason to comply with our demands. They're, you know, they're gonna present their case to the P U C and that's the, the board that'll make the decision.
Well, they're certainly not gonna comply if you don't ask them to. I mean, that, that was a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah, and we discussed it and our town council's, uh, advice was to pursue the course we pursued.
Art, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, that mess, that, there was a lot of discussion about pulling back and they revised their things. We assumed that they pulled back enough to be sufficient with the, the neighbors. Uh, it wasn't until just the other meeting that you started informing us that you weren't satisfied with that amount that was pulled back, but they did. They, they did, they did, we did talk about this and I, and I did, uh, comment that because they did pull back that we were in agreement with, with some of the other stuff. Yeah, I, I mean, it's not me, I, I'm not the one here, it's, it's that the planning commission recommended this. It was never submitted, uh, I, I, I don't know, I don't, how did they, in, in other words, and then at, at the meeting I was at, uh, everybody on the, on the board was under the impression that, yes, they had complied with what was requested. So I sent the documentation showing that they hadn't complied. So, the question is, okay, so we just roll over and play dead? I mean, that was a request. And it didn't come from me, by the way. It came from the planning commission.
So, uh, at the last planning commission, uh, Naomi was gonna call Shasbury Solar about this discrepancy. And she's not here today. Does anybody know what that, if that call happened and what the decision was?
No, I think the answer is no to that.
And so is there an intention from the select board to make any further comments about that area? I mean, I think that was a compromise that the planning commission thought was was reasonable, responsible. And, you know, in, in my mind, I thought that was the the least that Shasbury Solar can do, is pull it back from Holy Smoke Road. And obviously the planning commission agreed with that. You know, when you come onto Holy Smoke Road from East Road, that's gonna be the first thing you see. So, the community that lives on Holy Smoke Road is, is gonna see that every single time. People who are walking on Holy Smoke Road are gonna see that every single time. Bicycleing, they're gonna see it every single time.
If I can, I think that was the point that was brought up, uh, at the previous meeting and is why we took out the sentence that was basically saying we agreed that they had met the aesthetic requirements and the other requirements that were listed there that provide the opportunity to address some of these things as it's being appealed, and I've read appeals already filed in the, in the P U C or statements and, uh, you know, it's, the P U C hearing is gonna provide an opportunity for all this to be discussed.
But if we don't have any help from, from the planning commission or the select board, it's gonna be very hard for us to make the case. And, and we did, we did have, I mean, that was actually the planning commission's recommendation, after listening to the whole town, that they would take it off of Holy Smoke Road. And that doesn't even take it off of all of Holy Smoke Road. There's a good deal of Holy Smoke Road that is a little bit more shaded and we won't see as much. But, that'll help the pool property. But it's not gonna help an, an open, an open area on Holy Smoke Road. I'm just a little unclear about the process.
I think the town will have a chance to weigh in, it's the, when the P U C process actually initiates this. The agreements we've made now are really only in regard to the host town agreement, which is an agreement between the town and the solar company as to what they would give us if this project were to happen. Uh, it doesn't, you know, preclude us from making statements at the P U C. It doesn't, uh, it's really, this is all just in regard to the host town agreement, which is just an agreement as to what they will give us in terms of, you know, the tax rates, the brush, brush truck, fifty grand for the, uh, town green. And advice by our town council was not to, you know, demand too much or we could walk away from this portion with nothing and still, you know, the P U C would then still be making the decision. We have no, we have no, no ability to force the solar company to make changes at this stage, so we could only kind of shoot ourselves in the foot, so to speak, by pushing too hard. Now, they could simply walk away from the host town agreement. We would get nothing and the project would proceed through the channels it was always going to proceed through.
Well, I'm curious, I, I'm curious, have you had any discussions about uh, the opportunity cost of this property, uh, being developed by the solar company? Um, is there any, uh, consideration by the town? Because I know there are many, many concerns in the town about, and, and, and most of them are expressed in the town plan about developing, uh, an economic base and, uh, housing and various other things, uh, um, eco-tourism. And this property is a gorgeous property. It's, it's, uh, has incredible potential, at least in my mind. And I'm just curious, I mean, is, is the town happy that this is happening, that, that we're gonna go ahead and consign this spectacular property to a solar field? And let's not get into the stuff about climate change. This is not going to make any difference in climate change. So, let's, let's be realistic here about what the town's real interests are and objectives are. So, uh, I'm just curious as to whether that, you know, it seems to me from the discussion by the select board that, yeah, everybody's happy, this is great, um, but at least the planning commission, and again, this was not, did not come from me, expressed this one minor correction, which would probably have an influence, influence of less than a couple of percent at most of the energy output of this, uh, and, and still they can't agree to it. They can't go along with it. So, you know, I'm just curious, every, you, you're saying, yes, we have, we can object, or the town still can object. And I understand that. But it doesn't seem to me that anybody's objecting here.
I think the town at the time, when the, when the P C, P U C process is underway can say, you know, the town would like to see this pushed back from Holy Smoke Road a little bit. Uh, you know, wherever that is, you know, I don't know where the, where the lines will lie. They obviously, they made some changes. Uh, you know, they favored Mr. Poole over Mr. Auschnit. I don't know why that would be, but they did, uh,
No, I, I, again, this is not me. Don't, don't pretend that this is, this is all my, in, in my interest. This is, as Mike said, anybody who drives onto Holy Smoke Road will see that this is a utility. And, uh, and apparently you're all happy with that.
I mean, that property in Vermont, you could have a pig farm open there, you know, and that you would have no regulatory.
I understand, anything can happen in life. I understand. Anybody, anybody can do anything as long as, if they buy a piece of property. But at the same time, you know, most of the, uh, job of being, uh, on the select board is to make sure that things are consistent with what the town's interests are. And, and apparently you think this is in the town's interest.
There's a lot, there's quite a bit of support in this town for this project.
Well, we didn't see, yeah, there's a caught, quite a bit of opposition and far more than support, so.
The government is to weigh and measure those two things. You have a simpler job than we do, you know, we have to weigh and measure all of the aspects of this.
I understand, I'm not, I'm just saying, you have weighed it and you're in favor. That's obvious. So, so you're telling me now that, oh, we still have the right to object. You're not gonna object.
That's, that's my question, but after Art.
Art?
Yeah, um, this document only says that this is in line with the town plan. The town plan specifically says that we're in favor of solar. Solar is to be encouraged, so on and so forth. So, this was voted on by the people of Shasbury. So this is the town plan and, and this is what we have to look at. This is, and this document is only saying that this is in line with our town plan, so. Well, okay, but I, I, there are a lot of other things in the town plan that it's not only. In other words, I agree the town plan says you encourage solar and so on. But it says, and the principal things in the town plan that the town plan talks about is economic development and, and, uh, preservation of character and so on. Those are the principles, object, uh, uh, objectives in the town plan. Solar is kind of an afterthought in there and it clearly wasn't considered very carefully. And, you know, the main thing is, okay, we don't have this E P P thing, uh, and that was an oversight. But, uh, you know, it's not in, it's, this is not compliant with the town plan. I'm sorry, you read the town plan, it's not compliant. Plus, it's not compliant, I mean, uh, this is the other thing. The regional plan says we're allocated ten point five megawatts, and this thing is twenty megawatts. So, it's like crazy. Uh, and, and the regional, what's his name, Bill Colvin writes this letter which first says, oh, it's not compliant, but then has an energy committee that's all in favor of it. So, it's this bizarre, uh, disconnect between what's really written in these plans and what you're saying the town plan says. The town plan says, yeah, we welcome solar. I agree, that's what it says. But it doesn't say we welcome twenty megawatts of solar. It, it implied in that it's consistent with, uh, the regional plan. So all I'm, I, 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 what I'm really getting at here is you're saying, yeah, we're, we're going forward with this agreement with the understanding that we can object at any time. And I, I know that in front of the P U C. But my question is, are you? I don't see any indication of that whatsoever. You seem to be happy, you're getting this money. Uh, this, this is a done deal. And so don't give me this soft soap that you're gonna object, you're not. So let's, let's, let's be honest about this. Nobody said we are not going, going to object, so you're putting words in our mouths.
Okay, so that's a good question.
Okay.
You say you're, 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 you're still open, you can make comments to P U C. Are, are you gonna have discussions about it? Are you, are you, is your intention that you're gonna say the property across from Kit's sh- should be excluded?
I think we have to, uh, return to the question, the motion that's on the table. We're talking about a lot of future events here. Uh, the motion on the table is the adoption of this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind answering that. I, I think that the select board, and it'll be a select board decision by five people, it's not any one person's decision, but I think we can respect the last, the P U C that, that the solar company pushed that back from Holy Smoke Road. It's the most obvious way to modify the project in a way that, you know, I don't, I don't think some parties are ever gonna be happy with it, but that's the best we can do to, to modify or ameliorate some of the concerns that people have. We have to do it.
Okay, I, I, I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to hear that, because I didn't, I haven't heard that until just now. Uh, I, it was my thinking that, my understanding that that document was gonna go along with this agreement, but apparently not.
I don't know how you got that understanding or why.
Well, because it was published at the same time. It was sent out all as one package. In that, in that first meeting I attended, it was sent out as a package. It was said, this is, it, it, and it was indicated that this was like appendix A or something.
And it was discussed in our, the very specific. And it was discussed, and our, the very specific advice of our town council was to not die on that hill, lest we give away, you know, the solar company doesn't need this host town agreement to proceed.
I understand. You, you've been through, and I understand your point of view, and that's fine. All I wanted to hear you say is what you just said, that you agree that that should be eliminated. And that the town will object to that in front of the PUC.
Well, he didn't say that, Kit.
Well, okay.
I said, uh, uh, uh.
Tell me what you did say.
Make a decision. I, I can say this. Michael Chanowski, that's my name, will suggest to a future Select Board at the appropriate time that our suggestion to the PUC would be to push this back from the northern border of that property.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna clarify one thing, Kit. So, the recommendation letter that went from the PUC, uh, I'm sorry, from the Planning Commission to the Select Board was something that the Select Board had asked for, and so we wrote that letter. I think the Appendix A that you're thinking about is the Appendix A that's going to be the screening ordinance that will be part of the Enhanced Energy Plan. That's the appendix that we're talking about.
Okay, I may be totally mixed up.
Clarification purposes, so that you know which ones are going with which.
That's fine.
Martha, the, there's a definite map that the Planning Commission put forth that was called Appendix A, where there's a circle above the poles and a circle across from Kit. That said, we recommend this, th- these panels be removed.
Right, that was part of the recommendation piece, so that people could see a visual of what we were talking about. But the actual, the append, and we may have called it an Appendix A, but there is also an appendix that's gonna go into the Enhanced Energy Plan, which is that screening ordinance. But that has to follow through ordinance procedures through the Select Board and go through hearings before it can be attached to the Enhanced Energy.
Okay, oh, okay, I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't my confusion. My confusion was that the three documents that were presented were the map, the, uh, the description of the Planning Board, uh, Commission's recommendations, and the agreement. Those were presented to me at the same time. I looked at them at the same time, so I thought they were a package.
I see, okay, and I think they just.
They are not. Okay. Martha? Martha, you heard what, uh, Mike said about he would be in favor of, what it is, is I'm not gonna make a decision and say.
Do you mean Mike Chanowski or Mike August? I'm sorry, there are two.
Mike Chanowski. You heard what he said about, he, he would be in favor of making a recommendation to the Select Board that we do.
Discussion about it.
That we have a discussion about that from the PUC.
Okay.
I, I, I'm also in favor of that, but I'm not gonna sit here and say that the Select Board is going to do that, because I'm just one member of it. It's gotta, it's gotta be a decision. Would, would you be in favor of something like that?
So, I, I think having discussion, I mean, this is what we've been doing for all of these processes, whether I've been sitting on the Planning Commission or the Select Board, is having conversation, getting feedback from the public, reading the PUC documents. I, I mean, we're, we're following along, so having discussion is, is an important part of that, and how we all determine, I, I mean, that's a crystal ball, and so we don't know how we're gonna determine this yet. But I think it's worth convers, uh, having a conversation about. Definitely.
Okay, you've, you've got, got three people that would, that are in favor of at least discussing this in front of the PUC. Again, it's the, it's a decision of the Select Board to do that.
So, we, we were saying that we were going to discuss it as a Select Board, not necessarily to the PUC yet, because we haven't made a decision.
Okay, whatever. I, I, you know, I'll take whatever I can get at this point. I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand there are no guarantees in life, no matter what you say, so, uh, uh, I appreciate, uh, I, I, I would definitely appreciate your support on that point.
I, I just have one more point of clarification. Mike, you said something about, about Shasberry Solar making decision of Jim Poole's property versus Kit's property. And I just don't see it that way. I mean, I, you know, it's two properties. You know, I don't see why you have to do one versus the other. I don't think Kit does either.
No, I definitely don't. I, I, and I, you know, bottom line is, they didn't satisfy the recommendations of the Planning Commission. That's where I'm coming from. They did not satisfy those recommendations. So, uh, and my assumption going in was that you guys had discussed those recommendations and agreed with them. It sounds like that still needs to take place.
I'd like you to, I'd like to thank.
Discussions were in relation to the host town agreement. You know, the, the town council is very clear that we can object to the layout of those panels on the northern border at the appropriate time during the actual hearings. This is, everything we've discussed to date really is only focusing on this host town agreement. You know, I, I think we all know what that is.
I, I got it. You don't have to repeat yourself. I get it. Any, any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to thank you that you, you took care of the roads pretty well. Thank you very much for that.
Welcome. Are, are they gonna pave the road, uh, on the, of coming from East Road? I'm, I'm sorry, is that understood?
I think that's in the agreement. I think I saw that in the agreement. They're gonna pave it up until the entrance. Is that everybody's understanding?
What, what's this now?
They're gonna pave it from East Road to the, to the, uh, entrance on Holy Smoke Road.
That, that has not been told to us, has it, Dave?
Uh, I believe the wording is that we restore it to its, uh, current state. They will maintain the road and restore it to, uh,
Yeah, so it's not. But there may, there may be something in there about paving the, the new entrance that's being created. Right. Yeah, well, the current entrance is, is paved on the property. And they're planning to redo that. Okay, but, but what about paving the new road that's being specifically for curb cut right off from seven right directly to the project? I assume that is a paved road. I have no idea what they're planning to do there. Okay.
From seven in, it's, it's a construction road. So, the motion's on the table.
Is, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to take a roll call vote. Mike? Mike Chanowski?
Uh, I.
Martha?
I.
I also vote aye. Motion carried three zero zero. Okay, uh.
We have a few, the other meeting, Art?
What's that?
You have a few appointments from the other meeting?
Yes, that's right. We, we still have to, uh, at the last meeting, we appointed a, a person to the Planning Commission, and we also appointed somebody to the Economic Development Committee.
Emily Copperway to the Economic Devol, sorry.
No, to Planning Commission.
Need a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate Emily Copperway to the Planning Commission for a three-year term.
I second that.
That's a motion by Mike, second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And I make a motion to, um, appoint Shari Miller to the Economic Development Committee.
Motion by Martha? Does, Mike? Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So carried three zero zero.
We have one.
Okay.
Uh, propose a motion to contract with Tony Roan, uh, accounting and tax services on a monthly basis for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, uh, to do the bookkeeping job for the town, as our bookkeeper is, uh, quickly leaving us, and we need, we need someone to fill in until we can get a replacement.
I'll, uh, make a motion to, uh, hire Tony Roan for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month for bookkeeping services.
Let's second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So carried three zero zero. We have, under, you wanna do under, is there anything else other than under, under other business, Dave?
No, that completes, uh, from last, the last meeting.
Okay, so, under other business, uh, we kinda gotta discuss that, don't we? About the Grange Hall?
Yeah, uh, quick synopsis is the Grange, uh, failed to, uh, get the tax exemption in last year petition in time. Uh, they have failed again. And the Select Board has the option of voting to include as a ballot item the tax exemption status for the Grange. Uh, usually done by petition. They have not, well, a miscommunication apparently amongst members. They have not garnered enough signatures. Today, as we found out a couple of hours ago from the clerk, is the deadline. So, the option is for the board to vote to include the Grange on the ballot uh, in March for a tax exemption.
Dave, are you sure, are you sure we can do that? Just by a vote on the Select Board? Cause almost always, it's been voted on by the people.
I, I agree, uh, the statute is five percent, uh, due today to the town clerk. Marlene assures me that the Select Board can vote to put this on the ballot. The Select Board, I know, can put nearly anything on the ballot. I wasn't quite sure, actually, and this just came to me before this meeting about.
Okay.
Monetary thing, but, uh, I think based on Marlene's research, we can go ahead and vote on it.
Is there a way to, uh, instead of trying to get it on the ballot, to extend it, seeing that petitions aren't due for other kind of boards till the twenty ninth, and see if they can get the signatures?
No, it's.
You can't do that. Okay.
Sorry, forty-seven days before town meeting, which is today.
Got it, okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't an option.
So, I, I guess, wh- wh- why don't we make a motion, so we can open it up for discussion, okay?
Okay. So, I'm pushing, oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry to discuss, um, the Shasberry Grange's, um, tax exemption status petition to discuss this.
Martha, I need a motion that, that says that we are, that we want to, uh, exempt them, put, put it on the ballot to exempt them for, and be specific, whether it's five years or one year, or whatever you wanna do, okay?
Okay, oh, uh, cause I, I was thinking that we were going to just discuss it before we even make a motion.
We have to, we, we have to have a motion, and then we can discuss.
Okay, so I make a motion to.
Before we start?
I'm sorry.
I just wanna clean up the motion before we start. The motion, allow the town vote to exempt the Connaught Community Grange from payment of property tax for a period of five years.
Okay, so I make that motion.
Okay, and, and the motion is to, just to put it on the ballot, so the people can, so townspeople can vote on it, right? Yes, okay. It, I, I, I just wanna make sure that, check with Marlene before, you know, that it is legal for the Select Board to, to say that. And it'll, it'll still be a decision of the townspeople, whether it will be exempted or not, okay?
Dave, did I hear you correctly that they failed to do this last year as well? So, this is the second year they haven't.
Yeah, and both years are somewhat extenuating circumstances. Mert Snow had always been responsible for this.
Right.
Mert wasn't in the best health last year, and it kind.
Right, and passed.
This year, you know, Holly's been trying to pick up the things, and there's still a lot of things going on. Uh, I think it was some miscommunication in the Grange, uh,
Right.
So, longstanding town thing, so I think we're trying to go the extra mile to help them out here.
Right.
Could do is, if the board votes to approve this tonight, of course, if further research shows that, in fact, this can only be done by petition, uh, it simply wouldn't be printed on the ballot. Uh, because the ballot, the formal ballot isn't gonna be, uh, totally ready until the end of the month, so it gives a few extra days. Because if it isn't correct, then it just invalidizes this vote anyway.
Okay, so every, everybody understand that?
Yes.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed. So carried three zero zero. Any other business? Dave, that's, that's it?
I'll present this word for this.
Okay. Then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Martha, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So carried three zero zero. So, thank you for your time. For the special meeting. I know it's pretty hectic for Martha.